This is what happens when we're all sitting here too early.
Yeah.
That's true.
Ross and I have been here since 6:30.
Yeah, this isn't on video, is it?
It's very much like slap happy comedy.
Yeah, yeah. It's like a Red Skelton episode up here.
I thought you were gonna say Benny Hill.
I had to, that's fine.
Let's not to compensate.
Yeah, pick any old comedian.
You can do this, we can do this. Yeah, we can make it.
Just barely.
Lions are on, come on, let's go.
Did you hear us? Lions are on, come on, let's go.
Mine's only gonna be about seven minutes.
I'm with, yeah, Steve, you gotta get it down to like 30 seconds.
Okay, we're rolling.
Competition to see the shortest comments.
Calling to order the Monday, October 20th, 2025, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protam Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Henan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Vilani. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unguarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, I'm gonna open public comments and close public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, October 6th, 2025, and the city council work session on Monday, October 6th, 2025. Two, warrant list. Matter of approving warrant list number 1415. Three, motion number M9625. Matter of approving a budgeted purchase of a new Continental Cargo 10-foot value hauler trailer from Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc. of Howell, Michigan, in the amount of $5,900. This purchase is budgeted under account number 101-441-982-0000. General Fund Equipment Landscape Trailer. Four, motion number M9725. Matter of approving an inter-local agreement with Oakland County Animal Shelter for services and disposal and authorizing the mayor to sign the agreement. Five, motion number M9825. Matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions and hereby waiving any conflicting provisions and adopted policy for reasons stated in the staff memo. Six, proclamation number P2725. Matter proclaiming October 28th, 2025 as First Responders' Day. Seven, proclamation number P2825. Matter proclaiming November 2025 as Men's Health Awareness Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Any changes, corrections, or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes, the consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Henan to read P2725.
Proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming October 28th, 2025 as First Responders' Day. Whereas, first responders, including public works professionals, firefighters, police officers, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, paramedics, and other emergency personnel, stand on the front lines of our communities, selflessly serving and protecting the citizens of Berkeley in times of crisis. And whereas, first responders respond swiftly and courageously to emergencies, often putting their own lives at risk to ensure the safety and well-being of others, whether in natural disasters, accidents, medical emergencies, or public health and safety threats. And whereas, it is in the public interest for citizens, civic leaders, and children in Berkeley to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and other first responder efforts in their respective communities. And whereas, as of 2019, the U.S. Senate has included language recognizing public works alongside fellow other first responders. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims October 28th, 2025 as National First Responders' Day, urging all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies, playing tribute to our public works, first responders, alongside law enforcement, firefighters, paramedics, emergency medical technicians, 911 operators, and other emergency personnel to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing the quality of life for all. Proclaim this 20th day of October, 2025, at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Patterson to read P2825.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming November 2025 as Men's Health Awareness Month. Whereas, each year during the month of November, men across the globe are encouraged to band together and grow mustaches to promote and raise awareness for men's health issue. And whereas, since 2003, the Mustache in November, or Movember, campaign has generated a global health movement and raised thousands of dollars to fund more than 1,250 men's health projects around the world, including prostate and testicular cancer research, mental health initiatives, and suicide prevention. And whereas, the newly grown mustaches on the Movember Men's Health Awareness Movement prompted conversations, create a greater understanding of the health risks men face and motivate them to take action for their health, since men are 24% less likely than women to have an annual visit with a physician. And whereas, representatives from the City of Berkeley, including public safety officers, have abandoned shaving for the month of November to grow a "mo" and show their support for the Movember Men's Health Awareness Month cause. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section 1, that the month of November 2025 is hereby proclaimed Movember 2025 as Men's Health Awareness Month in the City of Berkeley. Section 2, the City of Berkeley urges men to learn about their risk for prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health issues, to undertake screening for early detection, talk to healthcare providers about treatment options if diagnosed, and to motivate their fellow men to take care of their health. Proclaim this 20th day of October, 2025, at a regular meeting of the City of Berkeley Council. Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation on the Communication Preferences Survey results from the Communications Director.
Perfect. Ms. Van Vleek, do you want to kick this off?
Sure, I'll invite our Communications Director, Caitlin Flora, up. She's been working really hard on this. She put out a presentation earlier this year, I'm sorry, she put out a survey earlier this year, trying to gauge the community's preferences for communications, which will really help her and us to guide of how we build our resources around communications in the future. So with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna ask that you bear with me as I try to juggle our technology where we're sharing the screen in the chamber, so hopefully this clicker will work for me. But thank you, it's nice to be here tonight to share what I have learned from the Communication Preferences Survey that was available to our residents over the summer. So it's always very important to be good stewards of public dollars, and that really especially comes into play for something like my department, where it's my responsibility to ensure that as many residents are as aware of department services and updates as possible. As you know, I'm a one-woman show, and so it was important for me to check in with our residents about how they prefer to receive information, so that I can make sure that I'm focusing my efforts and my budget where it truly counts. Additionally, when you adopted our strategic framework, two of the objectives under the Open Communications Priority area are to identify community audiences and identify priority communication strategies. In order to do this, a survey was a helpful first step. The survey was available from July 14th to August 15th this summer, and it received 147 responses. It was promoted through various methods, including social media, emails, our website, and flyers posted around the community. Special attention was also given to promoting it for our senior community at Oxford Park Towers, on our senior bus, and at our senior fitness classes and other activities. So now, I will show you some of the results and discuss what I've learned from them. As I mentioned earlier, we received 147 responses, so each chart reflects the percentages out of 147 total responses. For the question that asked respondents to choose the ways that they receive information from the city, social media was the leading channel, with email and community Facebook groups close behind. I was actually surprised to see that more people utilize the Facebook groups that are not run by the city than our website to learn about what's going on in the city, and so that told me that our city website needed to be adjusted a little bit to make it a better source for information in the city. Especially when I could see that the city website was one of the top preferred communication methods in the chart on the top right that you see there. Physical mailers and newsletters were ranked lower than digital communications, which doesn't mean that we'll do away with them, but it does signify that we are on the right track with a strong focus on digital communication. I learned that respondents are most interested in emergency alerts and public safety updates, with city council decisions, roadwork, and construction updates, and community events, programs, and classes not far behind. Information will continue to be shared in all categories, just like it is now. In the chart you see on the bottom right, the majority of the respondents noted that they would like to receive weekly updates about city information. However, later in the survey, more detailed answers stated that bi-weekly updates were preferred. So I just, this is a good time to note that while the survey is not necessarily statistically significant, as you can see from the results here, it was a good gut check to just make sure that we're going in the right direction with our city communications. So as I mentioned earlier, the survey results showed me that our website needed to be adjusted to make city information more accessible. This work is ongoing, but we have adjusted the headers across the front page of the website to make it easier to understand exactly what needs to be clicked for what you're looking for, and have created short links that lead easily to our various departments, such as BerkeleyMI.gov/library. And so that just makes it a little bit easier if you know that you need library information or you know you need public works information, you can just do that, BerkeleyMI.gov/whatever department you're looking for, instead of the super-long convoluted link that no one really loves. Survey results also showed that residents tend to seek out city information in our community Facebook groups, such as those titled Berkeley and the Berkeley Residents' Forum. So as a result, I have started to share city posts directly into those groups, as well as on our page, to increase the reach of information. Several concerns were also shared about ensuring that information reaches the seniors in our community, so I have been working closely with our senior program manager, Josie Modrak, to make sure that the information is passed along often as senior programs and directly at Oxford Park Towers. I'm working on developing an e-newsletter that will be either weekly or bi-weekly, based on those results that I was sharing earlier. Previously, we did have a monthly e-newsletter, but the read rate was pretty low for the amount of time that it took to put together, which then I couldn't devote to other projects. The updated newsletter will still provide the same level of information, but it will include links to learn more about each item mentioned, rather than just a wall of text arriving in your email inbox. And so this updated newsletter will begin to be shared before the end of this year, and I hope that it's a great resource for our residents. I would like to mention that as a result of taking the survey, 37 residents signed up to receive city updates via email, and 41 residents signed up to receive city council-specific information via email. Both of these email lists are available to sign up for at BerkeleyMI.gov/communications. So that being said, short and sweet, but thank you so much for your time and support so that I could share what I learned from this survey.
Thank you, Director Flora. Any questions or comments from council? Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Wanted to just thank you for taking the time to put together such a thoughtful survey, to reach out to the various channels to get the information, and then to provide with us and to the community the results of that. I appreciate the summary and also some of the next steps that you'll be taking as a direct result of the feedback of the residents, so I think that's fantastic.
Thank you, yeah, it's always important to me to make sure that we're actually doing what our residents want. That's what we're here for.
Yeah, yeah, terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, and as someone who's been writing a newsletter for the city for the last eight years to update people, I'm very happy to see the city taking this over, and I think it'll, I know that people really appreciate it and enjoy the information and being informed, so I'm glad to see the city take the reins.
Good, thank you.
I just want to personally thank you as well for doing the survey. For as long as I've been here, I don't remember anybody asking, how do you want to receive communication? And I like the fact that we're opening up to, you know, different types of communication, and you found your top three, and that's a great thing. I also know, I wanted to just mention too about the website, I know what a heavy lift that's been. You came into it when it was in process, nothing had been done to it for at least six months, probably more, so I appreciate you, your perseverance and sticking with it, and getting it to where we are today, so thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, I think we're good.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation on the Strategic Framework Quarterly Report Q3 from the City Manager's Office.
Do you want me to? I'm sorry?
I'll give a little intro.
Oh, perfect.
Just want to thank Tralena Stevenson, our Assistant to the City Manager and the City Manager's Office, she's been spearheading this project since the beginning, so it's been nearly a year since the framework was adopted, it's kind of hard to believe. So we're on the third quarter report, the next report will be the, will put the fourth quarter and an annual kind of into one, but Tralena's just done a fantastic job, and so have all the departments, just pulling together the information and tracking how we're, how we're doing and achieving all the objectives. So you have the report, that's in the packet, and then we do a short presentation as well, and again, just a big thank you to Tralena, so I'll throw it over to you now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna try to make it quick, I know it's a lion's game on right now. Okay, so for this quarter three, our quarters are defined from July 1st until September 30th. While doing this, I just want to note, there is a lot that happens in quarter three, so there's a lot of things you may remember, or like, oh, I forgot that did happen, so just bear with this. Okay, so our strategic framework has mentions the mission, vision, and values, which you can read also in the quarterly report, but these are here as well, as well as through our strategic framework process, we have made sure that we have our priority areas, these are our priority areas, and a lot of the things that I'm talking about are things that, objectives that come under the priority areas as well. Okay, so for the first priority area, which is organizational effectiveness, our objective for this one is cultivating a strong organizational culture. So this quarter was a really fun quarter. Our human resources collected information from surrounding communities regarding performance appraisal processes, and we also surveyed leadership to get internal feedback on that. We held our annual staff training in recognition of staff, as you can see at that bottom left-hand picture. This recognition is on a department level of accomplishments and recognition of staff and their contributions to our organization, so we do have a lot of public servants who do a lot of different things from day to day, and just making sure we tell them thank you for everything that they're doing. As well as during that, we also conducted two citywide trainings, one the FOIA training that was done by our Clerk's Office, and creating a resilient mindset training as well, which also, the training picture, I am the photographer here on this one, it's at the bottom right-hand corner too. And also for this objective, we optimized organizational culture, staffing policies, procedures, and level of service. So we had an RFQ that was completed this quarter to change our healthcare benefit broker from Gallagher to Manquinn Vance, that is a lot for me to say right away. Our HR department has aligned with the dental and vision benefit year, with the medical and hospital benefit year, as well as our HR department has filled information gaps to ensure all employees' positions, departments, union groups are accurately entered into BSNA for our audit. The Staff Parking Committee began a meeting to evaluate the current on-street parking process and discuss the expansion of municipal parking lots in general. And the Department of Public Works and Community Development have both reviewed engineering RFPs and candidates, and will bring a recommendation to City Council next quarter, which is happening right after this presentation. And then for, also for priority one, we have our objective, which is foster stronger relationships with community and regional partners. Our Community Development Director attended our Michigan Economic Development Association course, our Clerk's, our Clerk Office staff were invited to attend the City of Ferndale's All-Day FOIA Training. Our city clerk also attended the Michigan, the State of Michigan Bureau of Elections Training in Lansing, as we do have an election coming up, November 4th. Our Communications Director toured the Sacra Material Recovery Facility and the Sacra Communications Network and saw the behind-the-scenes of what happens to our recycling after it leaves the curb, so that was also very interesting. Make sure you check out our social media for some of these things. And we also, our next objective is to identify and implement innovative operational solutions. Our Community Development Department has created QR codes for residents and for comment permits, so that's accessible through BSNA and online fillable PDS. Our library staff is continuing our TAG program with the radio frequency identification to help with checking in and returning materials. Our Furnace Department has been working with all departments to prepare for the BSNA onsite training that will enhance the system, and that will happen in January 2026, which is actually right around the corner, which is crazy. The Clerk's Office is now three-fourths complete with the Civic Plus training for Agenda Management Program and Boards of Commissions, which is basically almost the same thing, and they will also begin in December. For our priority area two, which is economic sustainability, our objective is to identify, prioritize, and deploy economic development tools. The Community Development Department has released an RFP for the Economic Development Strategy, which has been posted and proposals are expected to be back mid-October, so around now. Our objective is also to expand economic recruitment and retention efforts, strengthening the city's economic portfolio. The Berkeley, our Community Development Staff have actively been working with the owners of Roxy to bring back their plans on the Berkeley Theater. Our Community Development Department has also been working with the new gas station and convenience store that will be constructed soon at the corner of 12 Mile and Greenfield with the expansion of mug and jug. Also, another objective for ours for this area is implement master plan updates and development process improvements. Our Community Development has created a webpage on our website to connect homeowners to different Oakland County resources for home improvements, and different things of universal design and energy efficient opportunities. We also want to improve our city and DDA strategic alignment, so the city, along with the DDA, has worked together to bring back the Dorothea Pocket Park for the Bookley season. Events at this park will be hosted by the DDA, our Parks and Recreation, and our Communications Department, so stay tuned for those. For our priority area three, which are community assets, our objective is to complete a comprehensive assessment, needs, inventory, and management plan, so our facility manager has started a space utilization study, which is taking place at City Hall to better understand how we are using our current space and what are our future needs for our space. The John Hill Land Ethics Studio has been contacted to update the city's five-year master plan. The survey is public until mid-October, and the engagement meeting will be scheduled for October 23rd. The Led Service Verification Line contract has been approved by City Council, and the field work will begin this quarter. The city has also, has contracted CBRE to acquire the city's appraisal of City Hall and associated properties as well. Our objective, another objective we're focusing on this quarter was improving facility and staff, and staff security and safety. Our facility manager and other staff have started identifying primary scopes of upgrades that we need, and we are currently working on some installation concerns. The Clerk's Office has also been working with Jack Blanchard to update and revise election security plan for the upcoming November election. Our city clerk has also been working with the school district to ensure a safety and compliance of all districts amidst the school district construction that's going on right now. Okay, so for priority area number four, which is over communications, we are identifying community audiences and the most effective city voices. So as you just heard, our Communications Department released a survey, and all social media posts will now be shared on the Berkeley Facebook groups with more details, that you heard about earlier. The Clerk's Office has been preparing for the Election Worker Training Program that will take place in late October. Also, our Clerk's Office has organized a City Council Candidate Forum with the League of Women Voters that is available on YouTube. Another objective for our area four is identify and implement priority communication strategies with human and financial resources. So our Communications Department has been researching more ADA compliant requirements that will be going into effect in 2027. Also, our Communications Department has been busy with a lot of press releases, the Historical Museum Cemetery Tour, which was just this Saturday, the Cruz Fest Parade, the after-party and award outreach plant award for our zoning ordinance update, so they did get an award for their outstanding work. And also, our Communications Department has been updating residents and community members on events via social media flyer postings and collaborations with our Parks and Recreation Department and our library with their fall and winter events. And then another objective for this one is fostering meaningful community engagement and genuine relationships. The Berkeley City Council was invited to the Berkeley Arts Academy Grant Opening. Our Finance and Treasury Department has worked with the Communication Department to provide more updates for the winter tax distribution. For quarter three, this, which was the end of our first thing for the Dorothea Pocket Park, was successfully ended, the survey of feedback was available, and we had 94% of the surveys were satisfied or very satisfied with the park. Resorts like these help inform different things for this park, so some of the things that we were doing for Bookley was informed by the survey that we had, so. And then also, we foster meaningful community engagement and genuine relationships, so our Department of Public Works and Public Safety both held their touch-a-truck event at the community center, and it was a paint-up law station, and there was really cute names that the kids did for the trucks, I can't wait to see which ones get picked. And we also had a donut food truck, which is pretty cool. The city also dedicated a gazebo outside of City Hall to former Mayor Mabel Frazier in recognition for her efforts in building this. It was a dedication event with a ribbon-cutting ceremony and a special exhibit on Mayor Frazier's life in the Historical Museum. And for area five, we have fiscal stewardship. Our objective is to clearly define and articulate the city's long-term fiscal realities. Our Finance Department has worked on the new budget template rolled over from the prior year, which will be available to staff this month. Our next objective is identify additional funding strategies and partnerships. The City Manager's Office has been actively, which is me and our City Manager Van Vleek, been looking for, identify grant opportunities and build strategies around that as well with different initiatives. Our Parks and Recreation Department has been working on a transition for event sponsorships and a robust calendar for the year, or sponsorship guide, and this would include Cruz Fest as we try to cover costs as best as possible. Another objective for this one is investigate new shared services. The Community Development Director met with all other 11 mile communities and began discussing joint grant applications for the streetscape. Hold on, one second. Just give me like three seconds. All right. Okay. Wait a minute, okay. Thank you. Okay, so I'm just gonna go off my script that I have here. Our Furnace Department has worked with our tax payment vendor to allow residents to pay via ACH and make partial payments as well when they're making their tax payments, as well as our Furnace Department has made large strides in updating internal financial policies and procedures. So we have done a lot this quarter, it was a pretty heavy quarter, so thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate the compilation of all this information too, because you all know you're busy, and you know things are happening, but when we're presented with this in document form and with the slides, it gives residents and council an opportunity to see all the work that's being done, the progress being made, and there's so much to be proud of in the City of Berkeley, so thank you for doing that, and thank all departments, staff and directors for being so diligent on meeting these goals. Sorry, yes.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Your Honor. Wow, right? I mean, that's fantastic, that's so cool. And on a personal note, congratulations on your recent wedding too, I think that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Could you tell me a little bit about, or share with us your thoughts on those interactions with the department leads and their staff, both in helping to communicate what we're looking to accomplish, and then keeping track and helping share with us all the good news? A little bit about that interaction with the department leads, please.
Yes, so we, I, so with my position, I interact with almost every department all the time, so a lot of the time, we all talk about and discuss different things that's happening, so it's a good thing that we write a lot of it down and keep track of it, but then usually our department has our department heads are really good at saying, I'm like, hey, I need a little bit of information. Could you explain this? I would say DPW does have the hardest thing for me to understand, because it's very hard to me understand water things, but I will say our departments have been working well with me in explaining things and being very transparent and honest about everything, even sometimes letting me see things. So that has really been helpful when we are putting this together as well.
Excellent. Well, thank you. Well done.
I can expand on it just a little bit. We have an internal tracking sheet, too. So Charlene has the wonderful job of making sure, and I don't think, I think everyone does, has been doing a pretty good job at just keeping up with it throughout the month. And we have, we have action items, and so they, and so we've really worked through, and Charlene has done a great job with this, too, we've worked through our action items and then also created, when we first did this, we had action items, we knew there were things that we wanted to accomplish, but then we also were able to say, there are things that we're already doing that meet these objectives, that we need to make sure are seen here so that we can report on them. And so it's been kind of a living, breathing document in that way, and Charlene has been really instrumental in being able to expand that. So we've sat down a couple of times, sat down with the different departments and talked about, what do you think you guys are already doing that are hitting these objectives? Then obviously, we have the tasks that we outlined as well, which came a lot out of the work sessions that we did for the framework. So all through a spreadsheet internally that everyone can work in and kind of add to, and this is where Charlene was talking about, she'll kind of, she'll kind of knock on their door, or, hey, can you explain this a little bit better, or give a little bit more context and whatnot? So that's what we kind of utilize to do it.
Awesome. Well, thank you for the behind the scenes peek there on how all the magic works, so thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did you have some at council?
Yeah. It's just for staff in general, so it's needless to say, I'm always impressed with how much you're able to accomplish with so little staff and so little resources. It's just, you know, a testament to what good stewards you are of the resources that we do have, and so, and this is, this is not a yearly report. This is three months. This is three months of activity. That's a lot that got done just in that short amount of time, and just, again, my appreciations.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M9925, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Spalding Decker for engineering-related services.
Is there a motion to approve M9925?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Valani. Ms. Van Vlek.
I'll throw this right over to our deputy city manager, Sean Young.
Good evening.
As many of you may already know, we don't, we do not have a staff engineer. We've relied pretty heavily on outside contractual engineers for many years now. Our current contract with HRC expired, so we took this opportunity to take a fresh look and see what else is available to us, what other firms there. Put out an RFP, got seven responses, interdepartmental staff, looked at those responses, narrowed it down to two, where we did some interviews, and ultimately, we're here to make a recommendation for Spalding Decker, for the city manager to enter into agreement with Spalding Decker. This does not mean a blanket coverage for everything, so smaller projects would take the similar path they do now, taking a look at this. We already have money budgets for those site plan approvals, that kind of stuff. Larger projects still come before council independently, so we have a big water main project, we'd still be ahead of you, making the same statement, hey, we want to do this project, get your vote, yes or no. We have a representative here from Spalding, got a little slideshow for you to tell you who they are, what they do. Answer any questions?
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for having me. A little bit further up. Here we go. Perfect. All right. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the opportunity, and I know we're really looking forward to getting started and getting to know everybody, and, you know, I think I picked the right meeting to come to, because I learned more in this city council meeting than I have in a lot of other meetings. But I've got a short presentation, just to, you know, give you highlights of who we are and what we do, but feel free to stop me, you know, if you have any questions along the way, but I'm Jeremy Schroed, so I lead our Planning, Infrastructure, and Engineering Group, and I'll be the main contact here going forward. Ted Meadows unfortunately had a last-second emergency that he wasn't able to make it, so he sends his apologies for that, but he leads our construction group, so he would be the one that he'd see most often in the field and working with residents. So a little bit about us, we're headquartered in Rochester Hills, but we actually have full-service offices in Novi and Detroit, so we kind of surround you. We have a little over 170 staff throughout the company, and a little more than 50 of those are licensed professionals, both on the planning side, the engineering side, the survey side, et cetera. We're an award-winning firm, not only from a business perspective of one of the best places to work in Detroit area, in Michigan, but also from a project perspective as well. We've won a lot of awards for our road program work, for our parks work, for our landscape architecture, for our survey throughout the state and throughout the years. A little bit more than 70 years of history, you'll rack those things up as you go. From a team perspective, this is our org chart that we laid out on our proposal, but what this really highlights is that we've got quite a few different disciplines and quite a few different expertise and a lot of different areas. And municipal engineering, that's really been our bread and butter. We've worked with more than 70 different municipalities at any given time, and we've learned a lot throughout our time, and that's really spread across the state, but started in southeast Michigan and has grown from there. Talked a little bit about this, of our ability to work with both the small towns, small cities, but all the way up to large cities, so we work with quite a few different communities in the area, but also across the state, so we've taken some of that information that we've learned and project experience and try to bring that to each city and specialize that or customize that to what works best for them. So we try to learn throughout and get a little bit better every day. Core services, I talked a little bit about this, but getting into transportations and pathways and traffic. We do a lot of landscape architecture, so that's dealing with parks, but also streetscape projects, and I think probably the most important part about this is that our core services collaborate together, so our teams are really teams of experts that get put together based on the project type, and we try to utilize that and not silo services into specific areas or specific offices. We collaborate across the company in all offices, put the best people in the best spot to solve the project. One, and another thing we're relatively proud of is funding. We've done quite well at putting together grant applications and coming up with creative ways to fund projects, but also identify those sources and put together materials that those funding agencies are willing to fund. So I mean, since 2019, we have a little over $23 million that we've been able to pull in for various communities. I think that just went up by another million as of a month ago, so it's, it's been great and great to see the communities get those resources and be able to stretch their dollars a little bit further. History of successful project completion, you know, the best thing you can get is a compliment from the clients that you work with, but also, if you said a project was going to be done at a certain date and a certain time, if it's done at that date and time, that's a successful project to me. And if you said the project was going to cost a certain amount of money, it should cost that amount of money, and that's really what we're looking for. Communication, this was great, this is kind of playing off of what they were talking about earlier. We take a lot of pride in that, too, because we serve as engineer of record for a number of communities, but we also serve as internal project managers for some of the bigger cities, so we've seen successful communication. We've also seen not successful communication, and so we try to learn from that and develop better ways to communicate with residents, because I think 90% of the problems that we have is just them not understanding what we're doing or why we're doing it, and once they do understand that, a lot of those problems or questions go away. So some of the things I shared up here are, they were talking about some spreadsheets that they share. We do the same thing for plan review, and it's a real-time, live update that gets shared with city staff, so they know if we're doing a site plan, where it's at in the process, because half of the time, they show up at the counter and they want to know, you know, where's my permit? And I've done all these things, and, you know, it's ready to go, and if you're, if I'm not right there to answer that, it can be difficult, you're trying to look through things, but if you have a spreadsheet to go to and you can scroll in and find the highlight and say, well, you don't have your water permit, you don't have your sanitary permit, you didn't give me your easement, you didn't give me your storm drain agreement, et cetera, et cetera. But even from a project status report, we try to provide regular updates to city staff of what we're doing each month, but also, you know, verbal communication, office hours, really putting the time in and putting the energy in, so they know how to get ahold of Standardization, this is something that we've worked with a lot of communities on of, you know, coming up with checklists and forms and processes, and I know the one that we get hit with a lot is escrow, of how much does it cost to review these projects, how much does it cost to inspect these projects? We've done a lot of research of cities in the area to determine what process they're using or what percentages they're using, and then you try to do a best-fit method from there to, at the end of the day, you're trying to give these developers a real-life look at what it's going to cost, so they go to the bank once, not twice, three times, four times.
Well, and if I may, this kind of dovetails right into the things that this council has, the process piece has been a priority for this council, and, and over probably the last year, we've been very focused on process, procedure, cross-training, so this is music to our ears.
Even program guides, there's a handful of guides that we've come up with. I know one recent one was Annual Sidewalk Replacement Program that we put together for this township, and it was the first time they'd ever done that. They were starting to see the lawsuits come in from Tribbett Falls, and they really needed a program that would help them, you know, attack those zone by zone, but also figure out the entire assessment process. How do you communicate public notices? How do you, you know, communicate when and how they can do it themselves and what the standards are for that? And so we've done a lot of webpage updates where we create our own pages with the cities to help communicate what the process looks like and what to do. Innovation, so this has a lot of different faces and a lot of different things. I could probably sit up here and talk for a while, but we'll keep it brief. GIS has been a big one, and we've been working with a lot of communities on community-facing GIS, so things that the community can actually access and look at, and obviously, you got to keep that information relatively limited. You can't show everyone where their water mains are and their sanitary sewers are, but you can show them, you know, what their zoning is. You can provide them links to what they can and can't do in their backyard without a permit or with a permit. You can, you know, provide them information as relative to, you know, trash schedules or voting precincts, or, you know, where the nearest police station or fire station is. So we've done a lot of that, where it's all integral into a single map. You can do a public facing, but then you can also have a staff-only as well that has all that information, plus the information above and beyond that. The other item I'm highlighting here is our sidewalk replacement program, where we're actually identifying these points in the field, picking them up, telling them what the defect is, taking a picture of it, so if we go through an assessment program, we can show them what exactly they're being assessed for and when it's removed and replaced, so city staff can access that, too, so they know, do, you know, this sidewalk was removed on this date, it was replaced on this date. And then just why us? So I thought it was interesting when I was looking at some of your background data and going through your strategic framework, that you had a set of core values, which is great, and I thought they really matched some of the things that we care about as well, and so we're excited to get started and looking forward to helping you any way we can.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Young, do you want to add anything?
I think he's covered it pretty well, but I'm excited to move forward, and, you know, it's going to be a step back. It's going to be a learning curve. We've got a lot of things in motion now.
Sure.
We're going to step back, find out where we're at before we can move forward. There are some smaller projects, primarily grant-based, we want to keep with HRC, but all the larger projects transfer almost immediately. We don't overwhelm you at all. You know, staff already met today, like, what's taking priority? And whose project goes first? And we'll fight some more tomorrow, but we'll figure it out.
I'm sure. Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M9925.
Henon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Okay. Gavin.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's regular agenda.
Ordinance number O925, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend section 114-27, Authorization and Establishment of Workforce Housing Exemption of Article III Workforce Housing Pilot of Chapter 114 Taxation of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to clarify that annual shelter rent payments less than 10% are permitted as authorized by provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966, Public Act 346 of 1966, MCL 125.1401 at seat.
Is there a motion to approve O0925?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Henon.
Support.
With support from, oh, sorry. Support from Councilmember Black. Ms. Van Vlek.
So the city first, we passed this pilot ordinance, if you remember back in May of this year, but while reviewing the ordinance recently, it was noted that the text for the annual shelter rent payment reads that the payment must be 10% of the annual shelter rent. Council's intention and discussion leading up to the original ordinance approval focused on annual shelter rent payment of up to 10%, not must be 10%. So the proposed amendment corrects that discrepancy.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council?
I just have one question, just for maybe my memory, but the 10%, where does that come, like, could it be 20% or is that?
That is the statute. Yep, from the statute.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilmember Black, you good?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O0925.
Patterson.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M125, matter of approving or denying or postponing a workforce housing payment in lieu of taxes pilot for the Columbia.
Ms. Van Vlek.
The city's first application for the use of the pilot program was received for the Columbia development in August of this year. Per the city's pilot ordinance, the application has to be considered at a regular meeting of council within 60 days of receiving it. Therefore, the application and the original terms were proposed at the October 6th council meeting and was postponed until tonight's meeting. As we continue to work with the applicant on the proposed terms, it's recommended that city council postpone the vote for this item again.
Okay, thank you. So based on the recommendation from city manager Van Vlek, is there a motion to postpone M125?
So moved.
Okay.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protem Gavin. Any questions and/or discussion from council? Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Okay. Public comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M125.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Henon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number seven on tonight's regular agenda.
Resolution number R1925, matter of recognizing that the city's designated official newspaper, The Daily Tribune, is ceasing publication as of October 30th, 2025, and that therefore, until further notice, the city hereby designates The Oakland Press as the city's official newspaper effective October 31st, 2025, for the publication of the city's notices, ordinances, and other pertinent items.
Is there a motion to approve R1925?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Van Vlek.
I will hand this over to city clerk Victoria Mitchell.
Yes, Section 8 of the 40th Council Rules and Order of Procedure names The Daily Tribune specifically as the city's official newspaper for all of its publication needs. The final edition of The Daily Tribune will be on Thursday, October 30th, as stated in the motion, so at this time, the council must name a new official newspaper. Staff recommends naming The Oakland Press as
Staff recommends naming The Oakland Press as its official newspaper. There will be no cost increase and it offers flexible deadlines that will accommodate all of the department's noticing needs.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Councilmember Henon?
And the reason we don't use the Woodward Talk, even though it comes to everybody's door, is because it's every two weeks and that, we lose a ton of flexibility, it prolongs things a lot if we did that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Any public comment? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R-1925.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vellani?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The resolution has passed. Well, we're at communications. Ms. Mitchell, who will go first?
Councilmember Black.
Okay.
Nothing for tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yes, the Tree Board met, got an update on the fall tree planting. 160 residents have signed up to date. We're looking for 175, so there's perhaps a little bit more capacity yet, and there'll be an additional 25 trees that we reserve for the parks and the library. The request system to get a tree is now going to remain open year-round, so when you, when that itch, you know, hits you, go ahead and sign up. And the planting this year will be in late November or early December, depending on the weather. The Tree Board also continued to review their outreach approaches. They attended several community events this season and are going to be participating in the upcoming Monster Mash and the Holiday Lights Parade. Their next meeting is October 27th at 7:00 PM. Then at the ZBAA Board of Appeals Council, we recently approved the special land use for the gas station on 11 Mile, but it required a variance for the location of their fuel pumps and the ZBAA granted that variance. So they've now cleared all the obstacles and hopefully be able to see them open soon. The ZBAA also denied a variance for a homeowner that had a second garage that they left standing after building a new one and they needed to demo it and they were not granted a variance to keep that around. Do not know yet if there will be a meeting in November for the ZBAA. And then finally, I have my annual Berkeley Treats map up for people giving out treats for Halloween. You can sign up your address, you can mark if you have allergy-free treats. It's at bit.ly/berklietreats2025. And I used to do the decoration map, but the DDA has now taken that over, so you can go to downtownberkeley.com and sign up for their list and put your decorations on the map and they're having a prize this year for that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Well, thank you, Your Honor. And speaking of the Downtown Development Authority, the DDA, the board met on Wednesday, October 8th. They discussed the boo-hoo-ly events, the Columbia Project, the downtown winter landscaping plans and so much more. And congratulations to the DDA and all the folks involved in the recent Witches Night Out. It was a great event, there was vendors and lots of good times, a trolley that went around the entirety of the downtown. And thank you to the business owners that stayed open and helped make Witches Night Out a delightfully spooky event. There's two more boo-hoo-ly events coming up. This Saturday, actually, the Trick or Treat Stroll is from noon until 3:00, so bring your kids and have a good time. And for those of you who'd like to stick around a little bit longer, the Monster Mash Block Party overlaps that. It is from 2:00 until 5:00. And all of this wonderful stuff takes place on Coolidge, north of Catawba. And for more information on that, please visit downtownberkeley.com. The Historical Committee met the next week, Tuesday, the 14th. They talked about the scavenger hunt in the spring of '26 and they're exploring ideas around having a lecture series with folks, talking about interesting things in our past and talking with cool people. Holiday ornaments are again available for sale and I'd like to congratulate them and the Chamber and all the volunteers and city staff that contributed towards the fantastic cemetery tour at Roseland Park. It was a great time. I really enjoyed being out there and talking with folks and helping answer questions and I learned a whole lot as well. So it was a great, wonderful event and all the proceeds benefited the museum. For that and more, you can visit berkeleyhistory.com. And finally, it was Michigan Governor Whitmer who once said recently, "Michiganders should feel safe whether they're watching a movie at home or heading to the classroom." And safety is top of mind for all of us. I bring this up because this is Safe Schools Week and I'm very grateful for the work that the Berkeley Public School District is doing along those lines. They'll be having a school safety drill, severe weather drill, district and shelter place and fire drill. And my thought here was to help encourage us all to take this notion of safety to our families as well, whether it's a fire or a power outage or the National Guard getting deployed or martial law being declared. Please know what you will do if any of these events happen. Because after all, Vince Lombardi once said, "Preparedness is the ultimate confidence builder." And in addition to confidence, I wish you all love and peace and please hug somebody you love. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick updates from both Parks and Rec and the library. For Parks and Rec, our second engagement meeting for the five-year master plan is this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Community Center that we saw earlier. And also join us on Wednesday at Dorothea for some Halloween fun, so you get to decorate a Styrofoam pumpkin and a small treat bag while supplies last. So keep an eye on the city Facebook page for any weather updates as well. The next meeting for Parks and Rec Advisory will be November 13th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center. And for the library, a couple of quick updates, like I said, construction of the study rooms is underway, so very excited for that addition to the library. And then the Friends of the Library Book and Puzzle Sale will be taking place Friday, November 7th, from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and Saturday, November 8th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And the next meeting of the Library Advisory Board will be November 19th at 7:00 PM at the library. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Vellani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No announcements from the Environmental Advisory Committee. And the Berkeley Area Chamber is hosting its State of the Cities this Friday morning at the American Legion on 12 Mile at 8:30 AM. Tickets are still available. This is your opportunity to find out who won Business of the Year and Business Person of the Year. I'm not going to tell you, you have to go and find out there. And then last but not least, this is my first full meeting up here because Election Day is coming up, the first Tuesday in November. Your vote is your voice, so get out there. All elections matter and make sure you vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. There's a couple of meetings from the Beautification Advisory Committee that'll happen before our next meeting. One on the 22nd of October, a couple of days from now, at 6:30, and then one November 12th, also at 6:30 over in Public Safety. And then Planning Commission will meet on the 28th at 7:00 PM here in Chambers. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Van Black?
In addition to the great events that Mayor Protem and Councilmember Baker mentioned, there's a third event that's going to be taking place in the Dorothea Pocket Park before our next council meeting. It's November 1st, the city is, November 1st, from 3:00 to 8:00 PM. The city's hosting a community picnic that will include a plethora of activities, pop-ups, crafts, and we also encourage anyone coming to bring a non-perishable donation to the Berkeley Cares Food Pantry. For more information on all of these that were discussed today and including that one, you can look on the city's website and the city's Facebook page. I also just want to give a shout out to our Communications Director, Caitlin Flora, for putting this event together. She's spearheaded this and is really, it's really evolving into a really cool event. So hopefully we'll get really great weather and people will come, we'll have some great donations for the food pantry and people will just enjoy themselves that last weekend of this pilot closure of Dorothea.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Happy Halloween and go Lions! Thank you for welcoming me to your meeting tonight.
Good to see you.
Looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you, as we are with you. So Victoria, I hope I haven't, I'm not going to misspeak here, but the clerk held the Election Commission meeting last Monday, October 13th, and I just wanted to highlight a voting machine that we have at every precinct here in Berkeley. It's the Heart Touch Writer All Ability Voting Machine. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. So if a voter can't hand-mark the ballot with a pen, the Touch Writer has accessible features that allow the voter to choose selections through an electronic interface and then to print out a marked ballot. So I just want, I mention this because, one, there could be voters out there that need this and I want you to know that it's available, and two, this is just another way that the clerk's office has made voting more accessible. So thank you, Ms. Mitchell and your staff, for that. The next DEA National Prescription Drug Takeback is this Saturday, October 25th, from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. And reminder, it is prescription drugs, pills only, no needles, all liquids must be securely sealed, tightly sealed, and no plastic bottles or containers, just put everything in a Ziploc. I attended the ribbon cutting for Coolidge Pharmacy on Thursday, October 9th, and it was just so great to welcome Alvin back to Berkeley, you know, he is the favorite pharmacist, and Mary, so both of them are back together. It's not the Rite Aid, it's Coolidge Pharmacy. So I just want to thank Alvin too for your commitment to Berkeley and you could have opened your pharmacy anywhere, but you chose to come back to Berkeley and I am grateful for that. I spent last Saturday at Bombshell Treat Bar as part of my Meet Your Mayor, the Meet Your Mayor escapades, I should say. I was there, I was there from 6:00 to 8:00. We had a fast barbecue with the Legion and then I headed over to Bombshell Treat Bar. And I just, I want to point out, when I am in a business doing my Meet Your Mayor, I always ask people, "Where are you from?" So Saturday night, there were people that came to Bombshell Treat Bar, in addition to from Berkeley, Livonia, St. Clair Shores, Royal Oak, Beverly Hills, Huntington Woods, Troy and West Bloomfield. And so when you think about economic development and the importance of this, that one Berkeley business drew people in. And then some people were like, "Oh yeah, we had tacos first and then we came here," or "Now we're going to get tacos," or "We're going down the street" or whatever. But it's so important to have a strong downtown because where your downtown thrives, neighborhoods flourish. They go hand-in-hand whether you want to believe that or not. So I just wanted to throw that out there and it was always great hearing like, "Well, how far did you come to get here?" And it was wonderful and P.S., everybody's happy in there too. Who's not? It's ice cream. And I just want to say hello to Emma and Abby who just moved to Berkeley from Ferndale. Welcome to Berkeley. And I want to give a special shout-out to the Mulvaney family and their friends from DC. Thank you for the robust and fun conversation. And my next stop on the Mayor's Roadshow is Perch 313, located at 2717 Coolidge Highway, and I'll be there on Saturday, November 15th, from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Vellani. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.